Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on this October 22nd, last council meeting of this month. Can I get everybody to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll begin with roll call. Councilman Loy.
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Henderson.
Here.
Councilman Koch.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Here.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We have a heavy agenda, lots to do. I'm going to ask for an approval of the agenda. Item D, do I have an approval?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Henderson, seconded by Councilman Koch. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, items one through three. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second it.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Burns, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. All right, we have actually a good presentation tonight. So Director Bill Hinkel, you haven't been here, what, in a couple of years? So it's good to have you back. Looking forward to hearing what you have to say. So, and he will share with us. For those of you who don't know, Bill Hinkel is the Director of Community Action. So welcome, Bill. Is the blue light on, just to make sure?
The blue light is not on.
Okay, push the button right below. There you want it.
The blue light is on.
Perfect.
Is it working? Do you hear me? And I've got this thing, so hopefully I press the right direction and don't mess up your technology tonight. It's great to be with you. Bill Hinkel, Executive Director, Community Action of Skagit County. And we do have a PowerPoint presentation I'm going to go through that talks a little bit about our impact on all of Skagit County and then specifically Seidra Woolley. Great to be in partnership with you. Thank you for your service to your community and to the entire county. And Mayor Johnson has been on our board before, so a special thanks to her. And she has a special relationship to our current Board President, Greg Davidson, who used to run Skagit Regional Health, who's an awesome community member. I also wanted to point out in the audience, Tricia, who's right there, is our manager of the Skagit Food Distribution Center, which we'll talk about this evening. It's located here in Seidra Woolley. It's kind of the infrastructure of the human service world that not everybody, a lot of people don't know about. So we wanted to talk about that. And it's an important piece of confronting hunger in Seidra Woolley and in Skagit County. And Michelle Metcalf in the back is our Housing Projects Director. And we'll talk a little bit about our housing development tonight. Not too much, but just so you know, what we're up to, I believe you're looking at your 1,590 funds this evening, which is exciting. I see some community partners here and we know some other folks who you might be able to support to do incredible stuff. We don't have a 1,590 ask for you this evening, but we certainly appreciate the city has that tool and that power that can leverage so much more. By the way, that's a picture of the Food Distribution Center where Tricia works, which is a pretty cool thing to check out. Now, hopefully I can advance this guy. I'm pressing something and it's not advancing, so.
I'll switch it for you.
Thank you. Is that from heaven, or?
It is.
That's amazing. So our mission, we're an anti-poverty organization, so we're about stabilizing lives and equipping people to move out of poverty and building a stronger, more equitable Skagit County. Our vision, we really like to talk about because it's, the vision is something we try to live into, which is the whole county, the whole community, working together to end poverty. It is such a complicated issue. There ain't no way one organization, a group of organizations, nonprofits, cities, the county, the police department, healthcare system, we all have to work together to do that. And if you don't mind advancing the slide again. One of the things that Community Action takes seriously is our responsibility and role to understand needs in our communities. So every three years, we do an in-depth community needs assessment. This last one in 2024, nothing hugely surprising up there. You know, housing is often named as our community's most pressing need. The availability and affordability of housing for people who live and work in Skagit County, still up there. Nutritious food, our Food Distribution Center, Helping Hands, the food banks, school meal programs, that's way up there and increasing recently. You know that mental and behavioral health are issues in our community, unfortunately, that are hopefully being addressed more effectively, but there's a lot of work to be done. And obviously, living wage jobs and affordable childcare. Not all of this do we work in, but we know that it's a need and we're partners in some of the things, if it's not directly us, though a good chunk of that, that's kind of our meat and potatoes. Next slide, please. Here's just a list of some of the ways that we serve the community. One of the things that we like to talk about, especially now, is prevention is key. You know, once somebody is experiencing homelessness, or lost a job, or having a health crisis, that it's so much harder and more expensive to get them out of that crisis situation. We can't always be there to do that, but we want it, some people call it starting upstream. How do you start a little bit sooner in the process when it's less expensive and takes more time and people still have a lot more of their confidence and pride and dignity? That's when we're trying to intersect and support in many different ways. Next slide, please. We're all over Skagit County. We have what we call Resource Centers, which is where a lot of our service staff are in Mount Vernon. The newest is in Anacortes. We partnered with the City of Anacortes. The council asked us to come and open a Resource Center to specifically serve onsite the residents of Anacortes, and that is really booming. We've been in East County in a partnership with Skagit County for a long time, and we manage that center as well as the Concrete Center. And then we also host Skagit Veterans Connect, which is in Burlington with the county and a bunch of veterans-serving partners. That picture, some folks here might recognize Dr. Stark. He is a semi-retired doctor, used to work for United General Peace Health. One of the things we do is we have a street outreach team that goes out and meets people who are unhoused, living on the street, and tries to create relationships of trust over time and get them out of that situation. Dr. Stark joined us. He's a medical provider, so he teams up with our outreach team. And the guy's fearless. He's not our staff again, he's just partnering with our team. And he goes out into woods and encampments. And if he can, he tries to deal with the health issue right there. But often what he's doing is connecting them with his network of healthcare provider partners and friends. And then we work on transportation to try to get them into a better health situation. And there's some miracles that we can share. Dr. Stark just won the Community Champion Award not too long ago, a few weeks ago, and we're very proud of that partnership. Next slide, please. This is a little bit of a winding path, but it shows a winding path. It's trying to show the winding path of our services and support from when we meet people, whether it's in our Resource Centers or on the street. And when, hopefully, the goal is that they're giving back. One story that staff shared with me the other day was a fellow named Anthony, who had a stroke recently and was dealing with a lot of healthcare issues. And obviously, because of his healthcare issues, had unstable employment, which led to unstable housing. And so our team surrounded him with employment support carries. He really had said he had lost his confidence, too, in terms of preparing for interviews, understanding how to do job searching a little bit better. And then also, his car was out of repair. So repairing his car and getting him gas to go to interviews. He now has full-time employment, housing stability. His diabetes is under control, and he says he's got return confidence. The other thing that he expresses is he's a better dad now. He goes to his kid's soccer games, he's teaching his kid how to drive. And that giving back, in his case, wasn't volunteerism yet in the community, but it was in his own family. Next slide, please. And that is a story of what we call the whole-family approach, because when people are dealing with poverty, they have a support system around them. And research has shown, if you just deal with the individual, you'll have a certain impact. But if you can work with that whole support system, you can actually work more miracles and get sometimes people out of generational poverty, which is probably the hardest issue to deal with. Next slide. These are our countywide stats. I won't spend much time on them, other than they're big. You can see the Food Distribution Center with Tricia, 3.3 million pounds of food going out into the food bank system last year is no small potatoes. I guess that's a pun, but I didn't mean it. And then here are some of the outcomes in housing and homelessness, education, employment, and overall service. Next slide is Seidra Woolley specifically. These are our stats from our database. 2,595 folks who said they resided and hailed from Seidra Woolley, of whom we helped 403 Seidra Woolley folks avoid homelessness, and 2,115 access nutrition, and almost 2,400 expanded income, and $116,000 to Seidra Woolley landlords through our housing supports. Again, no small potatoes, and we hope that it's a value add for your community. Next slide. We mentioned the Skagit Food Distribution Center and Tricia. And so, again, just really important. Before the county had this, it's located in Seidra Woolley, we gave out through the food bank network about a third to a half of what our neighbors North and South gave out because we did not have that central infrastructure in place. And we do now, and it's pretty amazing. Next slide. This is just a little graph of how some of our services are growing. Our Mount Vernon Resource Center is the only one that's, numbers are a little bit down because coordinated entry now goes through the 2-1-1 system. But otherwise, whether it's in street outreach, care coordination is when what we call walking beside people who are trying to get out of a crisis. And those services really have ramped up over the last couple of years, and we're proud of that. Next slide. I just want to finish off with this slide and then just a closing. But again, thank you for considering the investment of your 1,590 funds in some of our partners. It's the most pressing issue that we're facing in the community is housing that people who live and work here can afford. We stepped into housing development some years back. Michelle is our Housing Projects Director. Cascade Landing is in Burlington. That was our first project. That's a partnership with a private developer, his name's Dan Mittel. And we converted underutilized office space in the second floor to 34 units of affordable housing. Really created a project with a little generosity and private investment, nonprofit and a for-profit developer coming together. We were able to do that and make it work for folks. It also prioritizes veterans because Skagit Vets Connect is in the ground floor. So we're proud of that. We are now the second one down below is Colson View. We're partnering with the Mount Vernon School District. That will be for homeless students and their families. We're doing two phases of 24 apartment units in each phase for 48, mainly two, three, and one-bedroom apartments. And that's exciting because it's just really neat for Community Action to be able to work in partnership with the school district. And more of that might happen. Last slide, please. So, thank you, is what I want to say. Thanks for the attention tonight. I know you've got a packed schedule, and you were generous with your time and listening to me. Again, we really salute your leadership and service to this community and entire Skagit community. And may you invest your 1,590 funds well. I've heard of some exciting projects, including the RJ Group, too, has an interesting project with Home Trust, which Community Action started, by the way, which is similar to our Cascade Landing project and that for-profit, nonprofit partnership, which is kind of neat. So thank you very much. Any questions, Mayor, or?
It looks like Councilman Koch has one for you.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I'm aware of your organization. I worked in the field many years ago. You guys really do change people's lives.
Thank you.
What are you specifically seeing in terms of increase in need? I, you know, I guess I'm a, I'm trying to remember, Helping Hands was saying they have a reduction in food that they, you know, they used to have more of a backlog, now they don't. You have SNAP benefits being severely cut. I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, our numbers are certainly going up in terms of the people coming in and expressing need. I think the food, it depends which topic of need we're talking about. Certainly, housing has just become this huge issue. We see more and more of that. And of course, rent's going up and availability going down, although it's ticked up lately, which is huge, from 0% to about 2.5% vacancy in this county. Food is a big one, and I think you're right, and I think Helping Hands is right. There's less supply. SNAP benefits, November 1st probably would, will cease because of the federal government shutdown. Food banks were already fairly overwhelmed. Some of our other partners, like Tri Parish and Burlington, have just seen their numbers skyrocket. So those are concerning. We really have, we're scratching our head now, thinking, how might we get more food into the food bank system? Skagit Food Co-op just started doing a little roundup program. So if you go there, just buy lots and round up as much as you can, because it's actually significant. It's going into the Food Distribution Center to help us as we try to figure out more resources for the food banks and people who rely on them. So again, it kind of depends, but generally, the need has been going up. I hope that's helpful. Yeah.
Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah. Thank you very much for coming in and speaking to us, Bill. I appreciate that. I noticed that you had 403 people that were avoided homelessness here in Seidra Woolley. And I was just wondering if you can tell us a little bit more about how you did that and what that program entailed.
Sure. Often what that entails is people need just a little bump to stay. It's called prevention assistance, a little bump to stay in their unit. Or a little bit, sometimes getting into a unit is cost prohibitive for certain households. And sometimes it's that. It's that assistance that's not that long-going support, not trying to get somebody who's unhoused, but either moving into a house or staying in the house that they have right now. Even, there's some funding streams that are directly to support that, and they go to the landlord, essentially. There's also things like energy assistance, home heating assistance, because people's energy bills are, make it hard for them to meet other bills. So if we're able to support them in keeping their houses warm, often that becomes a prevention as well.
Yeah, I know it's a substantially larger amount of money to keep people, to put people into homes than it is to keep them in homes.
That's right.
So.
Yeah, the prevention piece is key.
Yeah, if all those were homeless, you were trying to get them into homes, it'd be much harder. So there was also 2,397 people who had increased wages.
Yeah.
Can you tell us how you accomplished that, or?
Sometimes that's through our employment supports that allows people to get, put them in a position to get more wages. Often, it's also getting, like veterans have benefits that they're eligible for, that they earn through their service, but they're not accessing. And getting them connected with the benefits that they've earned and are eligible for actually increases their household income, sometimes substantially. And it can make a difference in a life. So it's a combination of those two things.
And one last question. Have you guys helped people with insulation for their homes, things like that, so that their heat bills go down, from what I understand?
I, that, the Housing Authority of Skagit County actually does a program called Weatherization. In other communities, it's with the Community Action Agency. So we're, we have an energy assistance program, and we do some conservation education and do some low wattage lighting and that sort of thing. But we have to work in partnership with the Housing Authority.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
So Bill, I have to say, a couple of things. First off, the energy program, it's marvelous. My mother used that towards end of life. She needed help, and Community Action was there to help her. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Great impact on our family. And also Cascade Landing, I want to say that we helped you out with that maybe a little bit. I know there was a campaign, funding, raising funds that were going on.
You did.
And I do believe that Seidra Woolley did contribute to that. So it was great to be a part of that project. It's a great project, and I had a chance to tour it after it was completed. Very well done, very nice.
Thank you. Yeah, it's unusual in that sort of sphere of nonprofits trying to work on affordable housing. But yes, thank you to the city for helping us early on, actually quite early on.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember there were a lot of contributors and a lot of people who really gave to that project. And it was, it launched, I think, kind of a move to be more engaged in helping get those things built. So thank you for leading.
Thank you.
Yeah, leading the track on that. And the other one is the Cascade Landing also had an opportunity not too long ago to go up there and see the work that's being done. And you were remodeling the Resource Center or where they ate lunch there up in concrete?
Oh.
Is that completed? I, when I was there, there was a big hole in the ground and?
In a couple of weeks, we're doing the, what do you call it, the ribbon cutting for the reopening. Yeah, that's up in East County at the Concrete Community Center, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're going to have a shower there. Now, I think you might have seen that. The county is doing the remodeling, but again, we manage that center. It's going to be pretty darn sweet. So yeah, we're looking forward to its reopening. It's been tough because we do a meal program up there, and we've been trying, it works out of that space with the kitchen in the space, and so the kitchen has been closed. So staff have had to be creative for about 900 meals per month.
Yeah, yeah, it was, for a minimal staff, they're doing incredible work.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And thanks for visiting for that.
Absolutely, I appreciated the invitation, yeah. I also want to thank Tricia for being here. Thank you, Tricia. I know that you do great work over there, you really do. Had opportunity to tour that many times, too. So I've seen what comes in and goes out, and wow, you do good work. And also, Michelle, the housing piece of it, thank you so much for being a part of that. Yeah, all right. Thank you, Bill.
All right, thanks.
Okay, let's see here. We'll move on to City Administrator Report. Charlie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson. Counsel, no report this evening.
From any of the administrators at all? No? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to council reports. Councilman Loy?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing? Okay. Councilwoman Kestie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Excuse me. Councilman Koch?
Just a quick thing. I got a complaint from a resident on independence about speeding, which kind of surprised me. He said that it happens after school, so can I watch that? I also heard about car, I'm sure the chief knows about this, car prowls on Wedmore, my street, my neighbor told me about it, and in Gateway Heights. I also attended last week's League of Women Voters Forum. I thought it was a great way to hear from candidates in person debating issues important to Seidra Woolley. And that's it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, we have gotten a lot of response for the cleanup that was done on Telcot. So there's been a lot of people that were very glad about that, and I just wanted to express that. I did talk to some people that are at the Senior Center, and I just wanted to express their gratitude to the council for voting to allow them to continue to have sales. They do say that all of those things that happened at the Senior Center, all the things that happened there actually contribute. So they have to buy their own chairs, cups, plates. And so when they do make money from sales, or when they do have that opportunity, they do use it, and they were very grateful for that. And there's, there is a lot of interest in having our county assessor, Higgin, go over there and do a presentation on how they could best use, utilize the services for having the tax, what is that? It's a tax cap for the property tax and for the city utilities if they're, meet the AMI in range. So they were very excited about that, which is great. Also, I'm getting a lot of great feedback on the roundabout. So I know that the lights will go on in time, but people feel really good that it's open. The neighborhood's embraced it very well, so from what I understand. Great job. Thank you.
I have a couple of things. First off, we received three different letters. I'm sure that you saw them, because they sent them to the council as well, thanking the city for the cleanup that took place on 11th Street. And I've had an opportunity, I haven't been out there to see it, but I have the opportunity to see the pictures. And it's like light and day, it's like two different places. So huge thanks to Officer Carr and to our attorney, Nikki Thompson, and to you, Chief Michael Rath, and Public Works, you guys are always there, you always do a great job. Basically, probably all the departments were involved, so thank you all. But great work, and the neighbors are ecstatic. So thank you so much for everybody who worked on that. So it's kind of nice that we actually had Community Action come in tonight because we do have what is called the PIT count. And the PIT count is the Point in Time Count. It counts both sheltered and unsheltered people who are experiencing homelessness on the night of, on one night in January. It's a one-night happening event. This year, it's going to be on January 29th, 2026. This year, it's going to be on January 29, 2026. And I can send this information out to you if you're interested. These numbers are collected, and then they're sent to Congress, and they're used to determine the funding for nonprofit organizations, food banks, support of housing shelters, and other important community resources. So it's important that this happens and that there's a fairly accurate count. During this event, they also provide for those who are experiencing homelessness or inhabitable living conditions with, they give them survival supplies, food, water, tents, portable chargers, hand warmers, et cetera, all to help make things more bearable and to be livable. It's a wonderful event. If you have opportunity on that night to go out and be a part of that, I'm sure that they would love to have you be a part of that. So I hope the community will participate. This is also National Pedestrian Safety Month. Of course, every month has like lots of different, this is the month of. But this is important because the National Center of Statistics and Analysis has collaborated with the U.S. DOT to honor National Pedestrian Safety Month. In 2023, there were over 7,000 pedestrians who were killed and more than 68,000 pedestrians that were injured nationwide. And over the past decade, pedestrian fatalities have continued to increase. There are 72 pedestrians that are killed every 72 minutes. So, or I'm sorry, pedestrians killed every 72 minutes in traffic crashes, and that was in 2023. And that's something that we talk about in Skagit Council of Governments. Every year, we talk about what we can do to improve road improvements. And I know that Bill is very engaged in this as well. And it also goes to what you have been bringing forward, Chief McElrath, that there's a lot more electric bikes, and you know, it increases the opportunity for crashes and injuries. And so just kind of be mindful of how your, you or your child or both are out there with your bicycles, you know, are you able to be seen? Do you have lights going? Do you have reflectors on? Are you wearing helmets? We had a fatality just about two or three weeks ago, kind of right in front of the hospital, woman who was on a bike. So, yeah, so something to keep in mind. I'm going to move right into the proclamation. It's also national responders a month. They actually have a day, and I'm going to read this real quick like, "Whereas first responders, including career and volunteer, serve and enable public safety and render aid to all those in need. And whereas first responders risk their lives and safety every day in performance of their duties to protect all citizens. And whereas law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical services personnel, search and rescue teams, emergency management professionals, 911 dispatchers, and members of other organizations within the public safety sector come together to protect and aid the public in the event of an emergency. And whereas at a moment's notice, first responders are quick to respond to dangerous situations that threaten our cities, counties, and state. And whereas first responders must be ready to provide lifesaving services to the people of Washington 24 hours a day, seven days a week throughout the year. And whereas first responders undergo significant education, specialized training, and personal sacrifice to contribute their excellence and necessary skills to the public. And whereas we recognize the integral role that these responders play in the community and the benefits that we experience thanks to their work, commitment, sacrifice, and dedication. Now I therefore, I, Mayor Julia Johnson of Sejro-Woolley, Washington, do hereby proclaim on October 28, 2025, First Responders Day. And I urge all people within the city to join me in this special observance. And we are very grateful to the first responders, and I know that they're heroes, very much heroes to us. So it's a good day. So thank you very much for all that you give and do." With that, we will move on to public comment. So it is 6:33. I will open it up for public comment. Thank you, Kelly. Please state your name and how you're affiliated with the city, and try to keep it to three minutes. And first up is our former mayor, Mike Anderson. Welcome.
Yeah, I'm Mike Anderson. I have some other things, too, but I'd like to see your items from audience right after the pledge of allegiance. We did that for 24 years. You do the pledge of allegiance, people can come up, voice their thing about like a traffic accident, and then they can go home and eat dinner. They don't have to sit here for, like last time I was here was two and a half hours. And they don't have to sit here for two and a half hours. And that way, they can leave, they don't have to hear. The other thing was, I don't know if I should talk about it, it'd be the Wicker Road project you guys are doing for the homeless out there. Do we talk about that now, or are you going to talk about it later? I'd like to voice a couple of issues on that.
I don't know that that's really on our agenda. Is it, Charlie? I didn't see under the 1,590 that it was there.
We're here to talk about the recommendation with RJ Group.
I just like what the Community Action, if they are built apartments, that are built solid, real nice, not little shacks like you got on Hoag Road there that Burlington has. And then the other thing was, I liked, are they going to be just for Sejro-Woolley people or for anybody from Enhamclaw or something can go live in there? I mean, and then are impact fees going to be collected when they build them? I mean, you know, anybody builds an apartment, I mean, you have to have schools, traffic, you know, police, fire. You're going to have that done out there, too, I assume, because if you don't, then the regular taxpayer has to be charged more. So that's all I want to say.
All right, thank you. Andrea Wall? Do you want to respond? You're here?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I wasn't coming for this, but yes, so in response to that, impact fees will be paid for by this project. As we're working through this project, our goal is to serve more and more Sejro-Woolley residents in all of our services, year over year, not just in this project. Because we're located in Sejro-Woolley, that is one of our focus areas. But as a nonprofit who receives funding from across Skagit County, we also have to serve other residents. Our programs are based in different counties, though, or in different cities. So we have housing in Mount Vernon where we send our Mount Vernon residents to. So as this housing unit is built, we will also be serving more residents from Sejro-Woolley there. And the other question, I'm sorry, I can't remember what the third question was. I don't remember. But so the goal of this program is to serve families with children from Skagit County, not from other areas, and to grow further in Sejro-Woolley and how we do that. Families must come through our shelter first, and many of our Sejro-Woolley residents are currently having to stay in other cities because there is no housing or shelter for them here besides our rotational model. So this allows families who have stabilized, have jobs, and are currently doing everything that they can to be stabilized here in Sejro-Woolley, work here in Sejro-Woolley, stay with their kids going to Sejro-Woolley instead of having to commute across the county from Boe or from Mount Vernon each day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Aja. And Sally Carlson?
Sally Carlson. I live at 22917 Cheryl Drive. And I would just like to urge the council to consider our senior citizens before giving a bunch of money to outside organizations. Consider them for the senior center, Meals on Wheels, you know. It seems like you give a lot of money to help families with children. And I'm urging you to please vote for our seniors and keeping them in their homes, helping them get fed, get around town, you know. We don't seem to think of them as often. They're forgotten, and they're a wonderful generation. Thanks.
Right, thank you, Sally. Judy, your name was on the list, but it's crossed out. Do you, okay, okay.
First of all, thank you guys for allowing us to get up here and talk. Judy Hogness, I live at 401 Warner Street here in town. I don't think I can ask a question, but I will be asking what the cleanup was on Talcott because I didn't hear about that. I totally agree with what Sally just said. There's a lot of things that are needed in our community. There's a lot of repairs needed in our community. There's a lot of families that are really struggling. I mean, I have neighbors that are elderly, they rely on Meals on Wheels, they rely on food stamps, I know that's a whole different thing, or some kind of reimbursement a month. But I know they also use our local senior center. They, it just, I feel like when I come here and what I've heard over the last probably two years that I've been coming off and on, and it's a great cause, a homeless, wonderful cause, but when it's hundreds of thousands of dollars from our county and from you guys going and this going, and I never hear anything we can give them back to the elderly communities that are really suffering out there. I have neighbors that are in their mid-70s to 80s. I try to go help them out and help them find things that they can use, like your mom did on lowering her utility bill, on lowering real estate taxes, things like that if they qualify. And usually they do because one social security check coming into their household, and I don't know how they do it, you know? So if the Meals on Wheels, is that through the city or county? Can anybody answer me on that?
It is through the county.
It's through the county. So you have no say in that, or?
Yeah, have you been following it in the paper?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
So it's really on them more than you. So I'm venting. The other thing is the need, we need road repairs. This is, you know, something our taxpayers look at. What are we getting in return for our tax dollars? I've talked to Bill, you know, many times, we've been in contact. It's going to be a big project when you guys redo the concrete streets in town, if you ever do. And I'd like to see some surplus money being put aside each year into a slush fund to build to that infamous number that we're going to need to do those repairs or the replacements.
Maybe call it a road fund rather than a slush fund.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. I'd call it a slush fund.
So there's never ever any question?
But I really think you need to let your taxpayers realize things are being done to improve their daily life as well. Okay. Thank you for the time.
All right, so that's all I had on the list. Is there anybody else who wanted, yes, Dennis?
Hi, my name's Dennis O'Neil. I live on Talcott Street. I just, I've been coming last couple of meetings tonight. I'm sorry I'm late. Time got away on me, such a nice day. I've got a couple of things I'd like to ask. It's been bothering me for a couple of these meetings now, and I used to come quite a bit, and I haven't been able to lately. But I was wondering if it's a possibility, when I came last time, the only person I could hear from sitting back here about three rows was the gentleman from the Enforcement Division. He got up and spoke, and his voice was real clear. Everybody else was talking to the city council. And by the way, it would be really nice if whatever you guys are discussing, if you could have a couple of blank, what do you call it, information about what's going to be discussed, because nobody back there four rows can hear you. Everybody's facing this way, and there's not enough volume. The gentleman there, his voice carried quite well, but nobody else could hear him from back there. And I don't know if you're aware of that or not, or if it matters to you. But it was pretty dang sad. You know, so if you could make a couple of extra copies that you are so fortunate to have yourselves, so that the people that come here, I keep getting the impression the mayor doesn't really want to have a lot of people listening in on this thing, because I can't hear it from that far back. And I know you don't have much control over that here. You don't get, if I remember correctly, the city council members don't get paid for your job being here, and you should be paid for it. Everybody else is. Mayor does. Anyway, so I don't, so I don't know how that works or not. Maybe somebody could tell me, or maybe put it on the next presentation. So everybody out here on this side of the wall can also know what you guys are doing up here. Nobody, I don't think a lot of people at home, they don't tune in anymore. Maybe that's the idea. You don't get a lot of action back. It's a quicker meeting, you get to go home earlier. The other thing, I was wondering, why do you, it's getting colder all the time. And it seems like it's, Kevin, it seems like it's always colder in here, back here than maybe up there. But it would be nice if you turned the heat up a little bit, too, since, you know, since people out here are listening on their home TV or whatever. It'd be nice if we all shared into that and the extra copies be made, put out here. Maybe you get more people showing up, but maybe that's not the point, you know? I mean, I get the impression, too, these meetings run quite long, and three minutes doesn't last very long. And last week, I got reminded by the mayor that, by golly, I stepped over the line on it. So I'll try to avoid that. I don't have a clock with me, and it used to be, it was a little more prevalent. I guess, is there one up there? Is there? Nine seconds?
Yeah.
Thanks for listening to me. I hope you pay attention to that, write into your city representatives and tell them what you think. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anybody else who would like to make public comment? Okay. Seeing none. It is 6:45. I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move into unfinished business. The first item on the list tonight is ordinance number 210525. It's the community center. This is the third read. I believe, Kelly, you are going to take this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So this is the third read. We've made some changes. We listed them here. These are the changes from the current municipal code. So we went through and made all the changes that the council had agreed upon at the last meeting. The only thing I wanted to note that was different was the security deposit. If you're using the city AV equipment, that, we revised that to the $1,000 that if there is damage to the city AV equipment, that's a significant impact to the city, more than $100. So that was changed in there. Also wanted to note that we didn't include the insurance requirements in the municipal code. We talked to our attorney, and she said that's something we can just do administratively. So we will take that step as well, and all reservations at the community center will require, will require some insurance. And then, other than that, everything else is just what we have already, what we discussed at the previous meeting.
Are there any questions for Kelly? Go ahead, Councilman LaVaca.
One of the things that we kind of touched on, or I mentioned it at the last meeting, was the fees, raising those up and waiting for another time just on the basis of the community center. We kind of moved past that a little bit, but I just wanted to get the council's take on the actual, it was the ones in green, if I remember correctly, down below. Not the ones that are $1,000, but the 250 to, 225 to 250, those kind of ones.
This, the items are separated.
From the master fee schedule. So on the master fee schedule that we'll be talking about in a little bit, which I guess we can move into that one, but I did notice the community center ones on that one, outside of the ones that we're discussing that are like the $1,000 for AV equipment, the $100 for non-alcohol, things like that.
We, those were recommended by our Public Works Operations Supervisor, and we continued those forward, not hearing any consensus from the council to make changes on that.
Okay. I think I mentioned it just twice during our meetings, or three times, because we've had this three times, because we had a discussion in the committee, but because the timing of it was almost in response to an incident. We still don't have a response to what happened or knowledge, or if anybody's actually been charged for the shootings and the murder that happened at the community center. And then we were going to raise the prices. So I was mentioning that we might want to wait for just those fees on... So I was mentioning that we might want to wait for, for just those fees on that one, not necessarily the fees that we're talking about for the renting it at $1,000, or the fees for the alcohol, things like that. We had a great discussion on that, but the base fees were bumping up $25, were just going to happen because it was a recommendation. And it just seemed like it was ill-timing to loop those two together.
Yeah, I can tell you, just because of my conversation with Nathan Salsina, because he's the one who really, he takes all that in. Those were actually submitted, as I recall, before the shooting even happened at the community center. It was something that we were evaluating, something that we knew was on our agenda that we were going to do this year, look at the master fee schedule. So, so the two aren't related. I could see where you could think that that might be, so I understand that. But they're not related. Yeah.
It's just the timing doesn't look great, for sure. And if we can never get any kind of resolve on that case, that would be really great. Maybe have somebody come in and talk to the city about it, because as of now, nobody still knows what went on.
Yeah.
And we don't know if there's a murder out loose, or if it was a teenager or even around here. The other thing was that we have a $1,000 fee that is on reserve, not fee, but a reserve for the AV center, plus the insurance. We did discuss that. Is it one or the other, or is it both? Because if you have insurance, I know that we still have admin costs, but should the AV be $1,000? Because the insurance would cover that, I think, right? So you got to get insurance and then also put up $1,000 to rent the unit if you're going to use it. But if there is damage, you would use insurance.
I mean, I think the risk is that, I mean, with, the reason you have any type of security deposit is that you might not get back 100% from, from any insurance. You know, a lot of times, even just, even just staff time, you know, when you think of, you know, someone having to come in on a Sunday to fix the equipment, even our own staff, we pay double time for that. So if someone's here for, you know, a couple of hours, even, you know, four hours of work could be $400 in double time. So those types of things generally don't get covered by insurance, like our own staff time and out-of-pocket time. So I think that is the main reason, to have the deposit for any of it, for AV, for the alcohol. It also, knowing that you can lose $1,000, like that you have the, you're going to lose that money, you're not going to get it back, which you already paid for the insurance, you know? If it's $25 or $50, whatever the insurance costs, that, you already paid that. So that's really the intent of the extra $1,000. And just to clarify, and we'll make it very clear when, when it's in the system to be reserved, it's a max of $1,000 security deposit. So security deposits don't build on top of each other. So it's not like if you have alcohol and you use the AV equipment, you're paying the $100 regular, the $1,000 for alcohol and the $1,000 for AV. We've just had, put in a max deposit of $1,000. And which is what we, our current process as well, that the deposits don't build on each other.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. So as of right now, we're not accepting reservations until we finish this, and then, so, once we finish this, starting maybe tomorrow, or when will this be available online for people to reserve? Because I've had people asking.
Yeah. We just need a day to, a day or two to input everything into the system and then test it to make sure that it is working appropriately. So I would say by Monday that we would be able to have reservations or end of day Friday.
Thank you.
Councilman Cock?
This is a bit off-topic, but just following up, Councilman Lavaca. Hey, Chief, you might need to answer this real quick. In response to whatever, the shooting or whatever else, is there any thought to increase our security camera coverage, at least of the doors?
We've already done that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. With what Councilmember Lavaca brought up, I just have a question then. So the AV, if I were renting that, and I'm a church, then every Sunday I use the microphone, that means I have to do a $1,000 deposit? Or like, if I was a nonprofit and I was hosting, or I'm just going to say a baby shower or something, and we have, anytime I use that, I'd have to pay a $1,000 deposit?
We, like with the, with the church, they, they make all of theirs all at once. So we wouldn't say you have to pay $1,000 at every, for every occurrence, and then refund that $1,000. So it would be like at the beginning of the year, when they reserve, and then it would be refunded at the end.
So they'd have to pay like $4,000 per month, or whatever that Sunday is? How does that work?
Well, they just do it continuously, so it would, we wouldn't just keep collecting it over and over again.
So they wouldn't do a damage deposit, or they just pay one damage deposit of $1,000?
One damage deposit of $1,000.
I just want to make sure that it's equitable and that we thought about this portion of it. So if there was many discussion, since you had brought things up, if everyone's okay with that, so be it. But I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Like a lot. For AV, if you're using the microphone, or if you're using some AV equipment, like what if it, if something happens? I mean, a lot of that equipment isn't just out in the open. It's not like you're just going to run into it with a bulldozer or throw it on the ground by accident. A lot of it's embedded into the, integrated in the system. So insurance covers a lot of that. It just seems like a lot for the AV. I don't know.
I'm not sure that insurance does cover it, because Rotary uses it on a weekly basis, actually. And, and not everybody who rents the facility uses it. But there, I do know there have been times that we've had to have people troubleshoot, and often times a lot, just to get it working again. And then we have to have dimensional communication come out and correct it, and it is an issue. And this wasn't brought up by us. This was brought up, again, by Nathan Salsina, because he understands the complexity and the issues regarding it, and the complaints that have been surrounding it.
So if that has to be fixed that often, I mean, what is the likelihood somebody's going to lose partial or most of their security deposit unexpectedly? If people have to constantly go out? So if something happens and somebody's got to come out and troubleshoot it, and then they get a bill from the city saying, hey, that was 500 bucks, you just lost that on your security deposit. Thanks. I mean, what is, what is the likelihood it's happened that much? I guess that's a good question.
So, you know, you're talking to some, I'm from the analog age. You're talking technology that I don't use. I just know what I hear when I'm there at Rotary meetings.
Public Works Operations reports back to the Finance Department if we need to retain the security deposit. So it would, it would really be up to Public Works Operations whether it was severe enough issue to retain the deposit. So when someone gets the AV, wants to use the AV equipment, they get the key to the AV closet where all the equipment is stored. So that's the additional access and risk we have. Some of the larger events that hire, you know, like a DJ or something, often they don't even use our equipment. They bring in their own, like have their own speakers and all of those, all of those things. So we just wanted to cover ourselves in, in that risk that our AV equipment is damaged and we're out of pocket a certain dollar amount that's not covered by insurance.
So this is the third read. I don't know if there's more discussion or questions, or if you're ready to make a motion. Council, what's your pleasure?
How do you all feel about that deposit? Do you want 500? Do you want 1,000? Because we should move this forward, but I questioned that when I saw it as well. I looked at renting this.
1,000 feels high.
Yeah. 500? Would that still be a reasonable enough chunk that?
Yeah, you should be able to do an insurance claim with your insurance on the equipment if it's severely damaged. I mean, that should, it's part of the equipment. So if it's a smaller amount and the equipment's significantly damaged and an insurance claim needs to be made, I mean, seems like 500 or less even.
The damage deposit, you go to a lot of places, you'll find that they're required to bring their own video stuff, their own things. Now, since, you know, the city having trouble collecting money, just tell them, if you're going to have a video display, bring your video display. And you can do things like that. But that's why I brought the, I just brought it tonight for the mayor to look at. But they're, they, trying to remember who, oh yeah, it was from Seidewilly Schools. And they'll, you can get things individually, but a lot of places I've done for, people, if there's, there is, if you want to use a video machine, bring it on down, and then we got no problems.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cock?
Yes, I just wanted to say, well, first, Kevin doesn't have a bad idea. If somebody wants to bring their own equipment, that would be damaged, not the city equipment. I don't know how tech folks feel about that. Seems pretty logical to me, that you bring your own stuff, you don't have to pay that deposit. But I'm okay with 500 otherwise.
Okay. And Councilwoman Kestie?
I was just thinking that if, you know, you're having a class reunion, or just something very small, a get-together, and you wanted to show a video of grandpa and him, you know, 75th birthday anniversary, I just think that's an awful lot for just a really nice, quiet evening. So if we, if we had to make it at something, I really like the idea that we had the insurance as our back, because that's what we were trying to do earlier with the lowering the fees and stuff, that they'd have the insurance. That was our insurance, if you will. So I, I really don't want to have to make it too much. Could it be something like 250 for Seidewilly residents? Because that's obtainable for people. I could, you know, I could see that. And do 1,000 for out-of-city. All day, I don't care about out-of-city residents, but ours, I'd like to make it night.
Just an administrative point. If you're not concerned with the damaging of the AV equipment, it would be challenging to administer a different amount, because our system prompts different items. So like, if you had, if you had alcohol in the AV equipment, we would have to go in every time and adjust it, because we couldn't just, we would have to ask a lot of questions. It's kind of hard to describe without going into significant detail, but we'd have to ask people a lot of different questions to make sure that the system calculated the correct security deposit, that it wasn't, you pay $1,000 plus 250 for the security deposit. So just a suggestion for administrative ease, if that is not a concern, I would just leave the security deposit at 100, which is our regular security deposit, and then alcohol at the 1,000. That's just a little bit more easy administratively. We've set up the system. We moved to a new system just to touch all of these reservations a little bit less. So we wouldn't want to have to go in each time and make an adjustment for the security deposit. But we can make whatever council feels is the appropriate amount. We can make that work.
I'd be down to keep it consistent, $100.
Me too. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Hundreds fine.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion then to approve this with the 100, changing the security deposit to 100, or leaving it at 100? And making the alcohol 1,000, if alcohol is going to be used?
Mayor, I'll move to approve ordinance 2105-25, Community Center, leaving the AV equipment security deposit at the standard deposit rate of 100.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilman Burns. We're going to approve, or Cock, I'm sorry. Going to approve ordinance 210525, revising the Seidewilly Municipal Code 1236030, Community Center, and 1236090, Seidewilly Senior Center, leaving the AV security deposit at 100, and putting the alcohol, if alcohol is to be used, at 1,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Moving on then. Second unfinished item is Resolution 116825. It's the Master Fee Schedule update. This is the second read. And it's looking for a motion to approve the 116825, updating the master fee schedules. So Kelly, do you want to lead us through this again, or just take questions? Or what would you like to do?
Yeah, we, the only thing, we made changes from the last time was the deposit for the community center, and, there was one other thing. Actually, I think that's it. Oh, the, we took out the security fees. So if you would like to pass this tonight, you need to make a similar modification that, about the audiovisual equipment security deposit, because that's included in the master fee schedule.
Do we have a motion, or do we have any discussion?
We're just repeating what we just did, basically, right? Yeah, I'll make that motion.
And I'll, I'll second that motion as amended in the previous ordinance.
Okay. Any more discussion? Excuse me. So we have a motion to approve Resolution 116825, updating the master fee schedule with amendments to the AV security deposit, leaving it at 100. And is there anything else, Kelly, we need to add to that?
No.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Moving on to new business, we are looking at 2025219IAS, Skagit County, Anacortes, Mount Vernon, Burlington, North Star. This is a first read, and we are seeking feedback to provide the county and other cities for consideration. This will be brought back for a second read and a final action when everything is, when the final draft is finalized. So what is happening right now with the ILA is that it has gone out to every city's attorney, and they're putting eyes upon it and making any changes or suggestions. Once those are done, then it will be brought back to you again. So for right now, what we are looking for is your feedback, what you would like to add, any questions or concerns that you may have to this draft. Anything else that needs to be said on this?
Great summary.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilwoman Cock?
Yes, I was on that committee, and, you know, we were at the meeting, it was a couple weeks ago, and it reminded me, I worked for many years at Western Washington University, and we used to go hat-in-hand to the legislature and beg for money, and we always lost out to the University of Washington, and secondarily to Washington State. They were the 800-pound gorillas. They had law schools and all sorts of stuff. And they formed a council, and there were areas where, obviously, the UW would win. But we then went in a united front on certain things to the legislature. It was very effective. And at that meeting that we went to, there was, I believe, every mayor was there. No, the mayor of Anacortes wasn't there. And they all indicated that coming forward with a, with, you know, it doesn't have to be everything, but certain things, you have more wallop in your punch when you go to the state and fed. So I think that it's, it's a loose agreement, and I just wanted everybody to be aware, because I insisted, I agreed on this, I mean, this really wasn't my language, but I agree with it. In the non-delegation, it says this agreement does not create a separate legal entity or delegate any decision-making authority of the parties. The North Star Collaborative is The North Star Collaborative is purely advisory. All funding, policy, and contractual decisions remain solely with each party's legislative authority. So we don't lose any authority on policy, on funding, anything like that. It's mainly an agreement to cooperate with any entities where we agree with them.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you very much. I wanted to be really thoughtful about my feelings on this, so I wrote it out in a statement, which I will read now. While I appreciate North Star's efforts to address regional challenges, I must respectfully decline participation in the inter-local agreement at this time. According to your materials, North Star is working with mayors and county commissioners to change zoning and permitting, creating more opportunities to build affordable housing. As we heard in our recent Planning Commission meeting, simply changing zoning to allow for high-density and low-income housing does not reduce housing prices on its own. Without a comprehensive, community-focused plan, such changes can have unintended consequences. I do not believe this approach serves the long-term interest of Seager Woolley. We also have a duty to our taxpayers to ensure sound financial management. Of the five potential partners in this agreement, three are currently facing budget deficits. It is hard to justify entering into a financial partnership with organizations that have not shown strong fiscal responsibility. Additionally, we've heard the county is considering a sales tax increase through House Bill 2015, and it was suggested at a North Star meeting that cities could raise their own sales tax to piggyback on that. I believe that would be harmful to our residents and a setback for local economic development. While it's been stated that we would still have the final say, the reality is that decision would be made by the group and by our mayor or representative, not the full council or the broader community. We would only be choosing from the options they bring forward. We've seen time and time again, even within our own council, how hard it can be to get the issues we care about brought to the table. I'm not comfortable handing over decision-making power to outside groups that don't fully understand our community. To be clear, I am open to collaboration. If North Star brings forward a specific proposal that directly benefits Seager Woolley and aligns with our priorities, I will be willing to consider it. However, I will not support signing a broad agreement with an organization I have no full confidence in.
Councilman Cock?
No, I, oh, I'm sorry. Now that, oh, I had to say.
Councilman Burns?
Do we have Nikki on the line?
We do. I think we do, don't we? Yes? Nikki? You're being paged.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, thank you. I think Councilman Cock actually has it on the screen. The non-delegation portion of this agreement, are we in fact giving away any authority to make decisions on behalf of the city?
No, sir.
So that is not a correct statement, that we are giving away authority?
You aren't giving away authority.
Okay. Looking at this agreement, this is us saying that we would like to work together with other communities in Skagit County in order for us to achieve a goal. It doesn't mean we will always go along with what they're doing. We get to make that decision as it comes up.
No, you don't. You get what's presented to you.
Very literally what the wording in here is. I don't expect I'm going to convince everyone of that, but I'm reading a legal document and interpreting it as I can my best, and with the assistance of Nikki, our attorney. Reading through this, the way I see it, we have the opportunity to lean on two House representatives and one state senator if we need something from the state. If we work with other communities in Skagit County, if all of them agree to this, we have the opportunity to lean on six House representatives and three senators in encouraging them. We have more voices all saying the same thing simultaneously whenever we are agreeing on it. When you have an entity where the mayors are going, having a discussion, talking about what they are trying to pursue, what we are trying to pursue as a city, and then they can come to an agreement as to what they think is best, they come back, ask us for the blessing, I'm fine with that. I see absolutely nothing in here that gives away my authority, nor would I, to an outside entity. I don't believe that we have the ability to do that, so I would not agree to it. Reading through this, this is the least obligatory agreement I think I've ever read. So that's my feeling.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So I, I would happen to agree with Councilwoman Kestie on the fact that we do have partners in here that are, that are way in the hole, unfortunately. So there's been a couple of them, like Mount Vernon right now is really looking to how they can fix a $6 million deficit. Other communities are too. The county itself is looking out to fix $20 million deficit from a $94 million budget. And so the inter-local, even though it's not directly obligating us financially, it does kind of toe us in together. And I do believe a collaboration in any form will make a better impact. However, if we go with the inter-local agreement, then what happens is if we don't want to back up one of the actions that are being proposed, then it's something that says, but you guys signed an inter-local agreement, you knew what we were doing, right? You, you had the forethought of what the principles were. So I like the fact that if we were to bring back items to the council, and, you know, why couldn't the mayors all write a letter saying, hey, our councils are in agreement, or the majority of the councils are in agreement with this proposal, that they take back to the senators or the representatives, and they bring that up with the, all of the communities that agree with that. And it could be three, it could be all five, it could be however many of those. So it's another way around the inter-local agreement for now. I would definitely love to see all of our, all of our counties that are in, that would be fiscally responsible. And I do give credit to Seager Woolley Council and the executive branch for balancing a budget. I've recently heard that the 1% property tax increase that has not ever been done in places like Mount Vernon is the whole reason why they're in the hole. And we have not done that. And we have managed to balance a budget and have some surplus. Not much, it's tight, but I think we can do that. So that would be my two cents on the inter-local agreement, if that makes any sense to the council.
And so, just so the council, just so you have correct perspective, I want to make sure that you know what you're deciding here. We're not looking to them to come forward with, you know, outside funding. We're looking at, like, we're working within the opioid, the 1590, the 1406. We're working within those grants and those fundings that are coming into the cities. And then each council can determine what they want to do with those. You're absolutely right about that. And I would never want that to be taken away from us, from the council. But yeah, this is, you know, not.
So this isn't about an organization of basically the county, all the cities within county, saying, we agree to this, representatives can then take it and lobby the representatives, like Joe had said, Councilman Burns had said, in our senate and our representatives, to say, hey, look, our county needs these funds, this is what this is about. Isn't that what this document is for?
Yeah, you know, I have to say them, so this is a revised one. So when we have gone before the representatives in the state, this, it's a powerful document when you have the cities that have signed on and said, look, we see that this is what we need within our communities, and we are coming together as four cities, looking for the funding so that there can be housing, so there can be the services needed. And that speaks volumes. You get a lot of their attention, and we've been successful, Star Center for one, in doing so. So that's, one of the main reasons is that we're, it's just, it's just to say that as a county, we stand together and we really believe that we want to end poverty, we want to end homelessness. You know, we want to end the lack of services for people who maybe don't know how to get them or, or cannot get them. So, yeah, that's really what this is about.
I guess with the, the Star Center, which is a great example of the communities coming together and saying, hey, we have a need to help the mentally ill or help people that are abusing substances, but we didn't need an inter-local agreement for that. And so all those communities were able to go in, petition their representatives, acquire that funding, and have the Star Center built.
But we were under, we were under, we were under an agreement. This is just a different.
Well, we came under agreement around the Star Center. So, but not an inter-local agreement that blanketed everything, right?
No, we, yeah, we had one in place, but it's outdated.
So it just dissolved?
This is a replacement of it.
So the other one that we, that they used for that just doesn't exist? Or it was for a time period, or what happened to it? Or it's still in effect?
It was, yeah, because we did put it on a, it was, it did expire. And so now we're putting a new one in place, yeah.
I don't understand why it expired. We can talk about that offline, but yeah.
Oh, it was actually in the agreement itself, yeah. So that the councils had the opportunity to step away, although it did say in the contract they could step away anytime they wanted to, but, yeah. Because it was a fairly new, this is a fairly new, North Star's a fairly new and novel organization.
For the North Star, when we all signed on to that one for the, for the STAR project, if I remember correctly, this is years ago, to do that. I didn't know that that was a replacement of this, or that that one was already, I guess what I'm saying is, this seems like its own inter-local agreement blanketing all communities, taking it maybe to another level or to the next step. And that might be right, maybe it's not right. It looked like Nikki's trying to, maybe not. But if it, if it is something that's replacing the old one, the old one expired out or timed out for a reason, I would imagine?
That, we wrote that in so that cities could walk away if they wanted to. Like I said, it was a new organization, new, new idea. And we wanted to give cities the freedom to, we didn't want to lock them in.
So at that point, like, it's going to expire, and we're going to have to come back to you guys all with a brand-new one. It just doesn't make sense that they went and write it ongoing and say that, hey, rather than coming to you with a new one in 2025, after the STAR Center's in commission, we'll, we'll reevaluate and do a whole new inter-local. Because that's what this one sounds like, it's a new inter-local versus the old one.
Nikki, maybe you would like to step in and share? Because you, you know of both of them, so both of the inter-locals?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I would have to look back at my files to, to bring it back to my memory because I, I can't recall what the other inter-local said.
So, okay. Anyway.
Since this, yeah, this isn't even a final vote, this is just a discussion. So we don't have to find out right now, by no means, but.
No.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, well, thank you for the discussion. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. So the purpose of this agreement is to establish strategic framework. So are we, as a council, putting our input in to establish that strategic framework at every step of the way? Or is it the North Star leadership team that does that? And then brings us back options that we get to vote on whether we want to have or not? The framework supports a coordinated systems-level approach focused on measurable outcomes, transparent reporting, et cetera. You've all read it. So does, if we're not, if we're not in, entering any kind of obligation, right? It's a very loose inter-local agreement, then why even have the inter-local agreement at all? Unless, obviously, we're, we're, we're not the decision-makers here.
Oh, well, okay, so there's maybe two questions there you're asking? It's because we do, when we come forward asking for funding from the legislature, it's a, it's a powerful statement when you have four cities that stand together in a ILA that says that this is really what we are about, this is what we're choosing to do.
Okay, and I understand that. But going off of what Councilman Lavaca was just speaking about, about the STAR Center, let's just say that there's, there's a coordinated effort to do a project in the future. Why would we not just establish a inter-local agreement if the cities wanted to get on board to do that specific project? We're not, by not entering this agreement, we're not stopping anybody from having a meeting, right? We're not stopping anybody from having a open, public meeting.
No, and you've, you've already had the opportunity and the experience that if there's a project that's brought forward and you do not want to give to that project or support that project, you've done that. So you've had, you know, it's been freedom of choice.
Well, I mean, to me, it'd be less advantageous to sign this and then go through and be like, yeah, we don't want to do that. And no, we don't want to do that either, even though we've agreed to work with you.
So, so the process of getting an inter-local signed, working it through, getting it signed, so if we did that every time there was a project, it would have to go through the same process that we're going through now, where it would have to go to every city, it would have to go to every attorney, it would be a back-and-forth, back-and-forth, back-and-forth. This is just saying that we stand together. It's, it's, I think it's pretty innocuous, I really do. And, you know, if we don't want to participate, we don't have to participate.
Can I add something to? I think in the discussions on the Advisory Committee, one advantage that was also noted was data sharing and best practices. So you're not so siloed on what's going on in each community. I think that would be another advantage to this. And also, you know, it's based on, you know, this statement I just read, all funding, policy, and contractual decisions remain solely with each party's legislative authority. We wouldn't have to do anything we didn't like. And nothing would be forced upon us. It's just like, it's a loose agreement more than anything that I can see to help seek funding. So that's my two cents.
And then, I'm sorry, thank you. So the, the other issue is the financial responsibility of the jurisdictions. Or in, in this case, we have three different, three of the five people who are asking to be a partner. Anacortes is facing a $9 million budget deficit. They're asking people to take early retirement right now and voluntary, voluntary layoffs. Mount Vernon, it was in the newspaper, 6 million. And as we were told by Commissioner Janiky at the last meeting, it's actually 19, not 20. Thank goodness. Because, so that, that's a lot of money right there. And then one of the, one of the things that got brought up in that meeting that I heard that I didn't like was, oh, we could just, you know, raise the sales tax with, with House Bill 2015. And it was, it was mentioned so, with such, with such ease, right? And then each city can piggyback off of that, and they can raise their sales tax, and then we can have more money for this. And I'm thinking to myself, well, that's not really something I want to be a part of, you know, raising taxes, what, when we're trying to work on our economic development here. And we, we keep, we keep banging our head against this same issue over and over and over again when we have all these other things as a council we should be focusing on. So I, I mean, if they come to us with something that's good, that we might want to, we, we might want to partner up with them on to do, then I wouldn't be opposed to listening and having an open mind about it. But getting into, getting into an inter-local with, with three entities that are facing a budget deficit, it's almost like us and Burlington should just band together because we're the only ones that are solvent right now.
Well, again, it's not going back to what their, what their budget is. It's going back to the funding that comes into us through the opioid funding, the 1590, and the 1406. So we're not raising any taxes. And there's a reason why we haven't brought 2015 to you. Because there's a reason we haven't brought it to you. But, you know, and whatever the county decides to do, we didn't have, we don't have a say-so in that. But, but this is, this has nothing to do with what their budgets are, nothing to do with their budgets. It just has to do with, we have funding that's coming in. There's opportunity to do projects that do great work for those in need within our community. It will be brought to the council, and they have every opportunity to vet it. I've been, I think, very good about bringing in people who bring, who have explanations or tell you more or educate you regarding certain projects. If we have to bring them back, I've brought them back. Because I want you to have all the information that you need. So as much transparency as we can possibly provide, that's what we're doing here. And so this, this agreement is really just about saying that when we go to the legislature, they see that we believe in what we're doing here, to do good works. And, you know, just because we haven't joined them in a certain project, we've certainly done good works through Family Promise and Helping Hands and the YMCA and Children of the Valley. I mean, you know, you've been really good about sharing the funds and didn't necessarily require bringing in the other cities. So, yeah, anyway. So I just want, I want to keep this simple. I don't want it to be, let's not muddy the waters when they don't need to be muddied. Because it's not about where everybody else's budget is at. It's more about, we have this funding that's coming in, it's not taxing our taxpayers, we're not asking them to give a dime, but it's money that's going to go to help our taxpayers. And that's really what it's about.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I guess for me, it's, you're asking me to sign my name with a group. Do I support in the way they wish to, how they seek out the end goal to ending homelessness? I mean, we all want to end homelessness, it's all we ever hear about. I get it. I get it. It's just how we get there. And I fundamentally disagree with North Star and their low barrier, the, the way that they approach things. I don't want to sign my name for this because I think Cedar Woolley is doing very well on their own with the projects that we've been bringing forward. And I don't think that we need this, you know, reinvention of the wheel to go to the legislators when we're already having to tackle what they're throwing down at us in our own communities. So I think we're doing well on our own, and if we need to work together, I'm not saying I wouldn't do it, I'm just saying I don't need this organization to make things happen for my constituents.
Thank you, all right. Councilman Henderson, do you have something else you wanted to add?
Sorry?
So, so this is just a discussion? And, you know, we, we hear your concerns, you want to make sure that it's very clear that it's not talking about budget, but rather talking about the funding? You know, go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
I, I know, it's a difficult one. It's a difficult one for North Star and a lot of cities, too. The, the idea behind it, from my understanding, wasn't so much the 1590 funds or how those would be spent. It would be petitioning Olympia to receive more funding for needs that we have in the communities as a whole. And Olympia is underwater, too, and I don't mean to throw Washington under the bus or anything like that, but, you know, every, everybody seems to be under the water, but the intent is to go and grab more coin. I had talked to an individual at that meeting, and one of the commissioners, and they were suggesting that we really need to house people that were using narcotics and then worry about the time that they get ready to stop using those after that, right? But I had mentioned, our, our elderly are really getting pushed against the wall. And so, having more, like our community diversified, like what we're talking about, reaching out to Helping Hands, Family Promise, the YMCA, helping those people who kind of need it versus reaching over to Olympia to get more money, I think that's where that kind of comes from. It's just a matter of money flow. Two people are walking down the street, a husband and a wife, the husband sees a homeless guy, the wife sees a homeless guy, the wife's like, hey, let's give them money right now. And the, and the husband's thinking, you know, well, we're, we don't have the money in our bank account, we're, we'd have to do it off the credit card. Well, then, that's fine, he needs help, do it. And he's like, well, how do I budget this? How does this work out financially? One's extremely compassionate and more of a free spirit, one's a bit of a nerd in looking towards the logical budget. Both want to do something, but both can't be, you know, right, there's that just gentle conflict, right? And so that's kind of where this kind of comes in, and something to think about as you guys discuss it, and, and thank you for, for considering that.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, if we're ready to move on? Okay? Okay. So, next item under new business is the funding recommendation, House Bill 1590, capital, capital proposal. And I'm just, I'm going to turn this right over to you, Charlie.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. So, we've got an item on the agenda here that really covers the results of the 1590 capital request for proposals process. We had a committee of three council members, Councilmember Diamond, Councilmember Henderson, and Councilmember Lavaca, who held a meeting to review proposals and did some additional review as well. And here are presentations from the three applicants. The applicants were RJ Group with Skagit Home Trust as a partner, and then Family Promise and YMCA. The committee's recommendation is to fund RJ Group and Skagit Home Trust, or Home Trust of Skagit, for $611,000. So basically, the funds that are available from 1590 Capital. There was some conversation about how to potentially fund the other projects, so we included some of that information in your packet, but that's really a separate policy discussion, so we just included it for your information. We recommend you have a conversation, and we plan to bring that back at some point. But for now, we'd like to just focus in on the RJ Group, and Garrett Michael is here representing them and can speak to their project further. And if committee members want to certainly report out as well, that's an option.
Councilman Cuck?
Yes, I did have a question. I like the, the combination of, with the RJ Group of, you know, private-public kind of thing, but I guess I, I, maybe I didn't understand it thoroughly, but $600,000 for three units, that's $200,000 per unit. That sounds awful high to me. I mean, we almost could give somebody down payments for that kind of money. I know it's going to be continuing, but I don't want to understand how that we arrived at giving 200,000, $600,000 for three units. In the past, there have been council members who've been very, very concerned, rightly so, about spending tons of money on apartments, like hundreds of dollars per square foot. And that, it just seems excessive, 200, $600,000 and you get three units.
Thank you. I can speak to that. I chaired this committee, along with Councilwoman Diamond and Councilman Lavaca. Of all the proposals that we got, including, we can even rewind a year and go back to, I think you saw recently in the paper, we had Volunteers of America, and we were asked to fund their project, and their project came in, we would be able to buy one of their units for $487,000. That, that figure seemed a little, that, that's the money that we had at the time, and that figure seemed a little bit too high to us, so we asked to get some of the other local groups in. We asked to see Helping Hands, we asked to see Family Promise, we asked to see the YMCA. I think there was one other group, and their name escapes me right now. But anyways, to the point, what, what we came up with, with our very exhaustive review of all three of these recent proposals was, and if Garrett could help me out here a little bit, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but we're right at about $203,000 per unit, but with the drop in our interest rates, we actually will be a little bit lower than that. So, we're looking at, we're looking at four units right now instead of three. Also, we have, the price per unit with the other project was over $100,000 more per living unit. So, based on, based on what we, what we reviewed for our, for our tax dollars and how far they can go, this project gets our tax dollars the furthest, and it provides, it provides up to four units that people can buy at 60% AMI.
Councilman Cuck?
Yeah, I just, you know, just doing some math, though, so, 611,000, which would provide three or four units, compared to, so that's what, nine people, 12 people, compared to 14 cottages at Family Promise, and that's times three, that'd be like 42 people, plus the fact that, let me get this right, I wrote it down, the AMI of, at the RJ Group would be 60%, whereas the R, the AMI at Family Promise would be 30%, which according to our comprehensive plan is, those are people that are struggling more, more poorer, basically, and that is also the area of greatest need in our comp plan. It just seems like Family Promise has more bang for the buck, gets more people from homelessness into, into housing, it puts a roof over their head, whereas the RJ Group, I'm, I'm perfectly okay with funding it, but I just don't see the point of entirely funding it.
Okay, so, back to your point of entirely funding it, you say we, say we just give them half, right? Say we give, we give them 300,000, right? Well, we're not getting as many units, our dollars aren't stretching as far. With the, with the other project, with Family Promise, I think, memory, on memory, it was either 4.3 or 4.6 million dollars for their entire project. So if you take that 14 units and, and you divide that over 4.6 million, it's incredibly much more expensive. So, the, the way, the way that we, the way that we came to this conclusion was, we looked very hard at it, and I, I understand where you're coming from, where the 30%, zero to 30 is, you know, the poorest of our community, and that's where the greatest need could very well be. We're not, with the money that we're giving here, the taxpayer funds that we're giving here, we're not, we're not getting a guaranteed and immediate result. We're paying for the dirt work, and we're not paying for these housing units to actually be built right now. They're not, it's not fully permitted, it's not, like, all, all the steps are not in place to go right now. With this other project that we came to the, to, the committee came to the conclusion of, of funding is ready to go, they're fully funded, and the crazy part is, they don't need to do this, right? Like, do you need to do this, Garrett?
No, it's, it's a good faith effort on the RJ Group part to bring the affordable housing into the city, and it's promised to the Home Trust of Skagit through our partnership that we are going to be contributing affordable housing in all of our future developments, but we can't do it alone. We're taking a lower margin on our product, but we can't be giving our product away at 90, or 60% AMI because we would be losing money on our development.
So I, I have a concern actually having you provide information, simply because I think the other group should have the opportunity to be here providing information as well. We do have Family Promise here, and I think, Audra, if you wanted to come up and share some of your thoughts and ideas, too, regarding your project, in, in all fairness, because I think that that's what needs to happen here. There needs to be fairness.
But after that, the council will be able to continue the conversation after both parties make party comment and go sit down.
Absolutely. I think that's the right thing to do, Nick.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I do want to make it clear that I do believe in the RJ Group project as well. It is a needed service here in Skagit County. Our project is meant to serve the 0 to 30% AMI and prepare these families to be in the 30 to 50% and above AMI. In this housing project, we will serve those families over and over, meaning that one set of families will come in, we will stabilize them at an 80% success rate, and prepare them to move into housing in that 30, 30-plus AMI range. So then another group will come in, and another group will come in, and another group will come in. So when we're thinking about this 0 to 30% AMI group that we need to find a solution for, it is really hard. I was at that, the Housing Planning Commission last night, where we talk about all this zoning that needs to happen. I'm a Cedar Woolley resident, and I have children that live here, and I hope that my children can stay living here. But it doesn't look like they will be able to unless I move out of my house and leave it to them, right? So the services that Family Promise is trying to provide is this catch-all that will help families when they fall in that, and what the RJ Group is looking to do is create the place where they can go to after that. So the two projects are very much needed in our community to create a progress forward to a long-sustaining community housing program.
Thank you both. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I was part of that committee as well, and one of the things that we discussed was the, the RJ Group, well, there's three things, RJ Group, YMCA, and the Family Promise. The YMCA was removed, and they agreed, rightfully so, be removed because they wanted $75,000 for a remodel of a kitchen to help possibly children that may be homeless, so no quite guarantees with any of that stuff. But they were also doing a very large remodel and had plenty enough money for the entire remodel. They would also include a back porch area and a remodeled bathroom that already worked, and, and I pointed out, well, should people be in the street so that you guys can have a little back porch, you know? And so they have enough money for their kitchen, and maybe they come back. The Family Promise is a cost-effective way, but it is also a little bit more than the general cost, because the person's going to be owning the home at RJ Group, and that was one of the things that was really impressive about that. So is that generational wealth being developed? Also, the template, the template's not well-established, so to see the help getting that template well-established. The other portion was that this is community funds, this is all raised within Cedar Woolley. The 1590 funds are from all of the residents, so we have no choice but to consider the residents within this, within this equation. And so, what is going to, what do the residents with their money, how are they going to want to see that spent? If there's a progress, or a project that's going to take place in a neighborhood, they have to also buy in on that project. And so, I believe that the funding will probably be there. I also believe that, just like RJ Group, having to put up public notices and make sure that if I'm putting up this apartment rising or any kind of development, the public is weighing in, getting that information, there's great deliberation with all of that. So, I think that the RJ Group did propose a good financial sound concept, too, for building people out. Would like to see people moving from zero to 30. That is a very serious thing that Audrey talked about. There is none of that, and so having that home ability is crucial. 14 is a lot inside of a neighborhood. However, we're expected to put up 741, according to the comp plan. That's, that's real, that we all got to consider. That's 37 homes every year for the next 20 years that we have to pave the way with rezoning, tax subsidies, all that. So to say that...
For the 30, for the 30% AMI?
For the 30% AMI, not the 60%, for the 30%,
Right.
Which, if the 60% AMI is a $200,000 subsidy from taxpayer money, how much is the 30% going to be, right? So it's still subsidized by taxpayer funding, and that's something that has to be considered as well. So to see if we can do something that bridges that and allows for more growth productive to the community to generate more funds made sense. They had a good, long-term financial plan.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I, I sat in the back and listened to all the presentations when you guys were having your committee meeting, and seeing and hearing from the different organizations, I am so grateful to the RJ Group and what they're proposing, and that you are giving people a chance at homeownership in Cedar Woolley. And I just applaud you for your efforts, and the 90-year, I think it was, 90-year...
99.
99 years, that it's going to keep going. So, thank you very much.
Okay, and Councilwoman Burns?
I appreciate all three projects that were being proposed. You're all filling different niches in the needs of our community, but because RJ Group's was what was brought forward by the committee, I'm going to ask questions about that, because I was just reading through all the proposals here, and I had a curiosity. I've heard four homes, and here it says three, maybe four on page, what is it, 101? But then when I read deeper into the document, page 165, it says that you need $712,932 for three homes, which would leave us at a deficit of 101,932, if I have all my numbers right. So, has something changed since what I saw in here? Did I miss a page?
Well, if you take a look at the Excel spreadsheet that was provided, it's essentially a sliding scale. It all depends on the number of occupants in the home. I gave a three- and four-person occupants scenario. So if we go with four-person occupants, then that brings that down payment assistance lower because they qualify for more under that AMI because they have more, more occupants within the home. So I just gave a sliding scale. If, if the council wants to commit to a specific number of homes, then we have to only work with borrowers that have four occupants. So it's, it's dependent on what the preference is, but that, I provided a sliding scale just to kind of give you a scenario of how it could be approached.
Thank you. I've probably missed a sliding scale, my computer either wants to be at like 5% or 150%. Thank you.
And, Madam Mayor, I'll try and answer that in the committee, or maybe Councilman Henderson can, so we don't have to have the, the person speak, if it's, if it's not necessary.
All right, Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, you're good.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Cuck?
I just want to reiterate, I think we have both needs. And the Family Promise will provide transitional to people in desperate straits, and then the RJ Group will allow them to step up and have permanent housing. I like both projects, I think both should be funded.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Kestie?
I am, I am moving, I would like to move forward with presenting the RJ Group with the amount recommended by the committee, so I would like to make a motion to do that, if that's what you guys want. if that's what you guys are looking for.
Were you looking for a motion tonight? I don't see that, Charlie.
My apologies, but yes, a motion would be helpful.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Council, or Councilman Henderson, to move forward with the funding that was recommended by the group to go to the RJ Group. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Mayor, I would just amend that to add the amount, 611,000.
Okay, $611,000. And the amount of $611,000. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
Opposed, aye.
Okay. So, we have six in favor, and one opposed, and that is Councilman Cock. Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on, then, to item number three, which is the construction and the maintenance agreement, BNSF Jones-John Liner Railroad Underpass Project. And this is our Public Works Director, Bill Bullock.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we finally have an agreement with BNSF to sign and execute so they can complete Phase Two of the undercrossing bridge. And it's, so the, so in 2020, we had a Phase One agreement. That's when they sank the piles, and then basically purchased all the physical material to build the bridge. And then, and then it wasn't until I got on board that I started with the Phase Two agreement, to actually put the bridge together and put the bridge in. The challenge with all this, and why it's been staged like this, is because BNSF has 12 hours to install this bridge before the next train comes through. I don't know how they're doing it. They're professionals, they know how to do it, but that's what it is. So, partially with this agreement, the, there's two different costs with it. Initially, with this agreement, there's the cost to purchase, the easement, and the temporary construction easements for when we build our road through the bridge. That is due to BNSF within 60 days of executing this agreement. And then, when they get substantial completion on their bridge, then we have a $395,000 balance to pay them at that time, which will likely be this spring, from what I understand. But we won't know that schedule until they get there. But this is the first step in that process, and so, I'm looking for a motion to allow the mayor to execute this agreement with BNSF.
Okay, are there any questions for Bill? Councilwoman Kestie?
Oh, I was just going to make a motion, and then say good luck in that 12 hours to those people.
I'll put you down for making the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Now, I'll ask, are there any discussions, questions? No. Okay. Councilman Cock?
I was just gonna, I agree...
Getting ready to vote, are you?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good. Motion carries. Moving on to item number four of new business, we have grant and development agreement, RJ Group, Skagit County Economic Development, and our Community Development Director, Thomas Glover, is going to lead us through this.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As you may recall, last summer, the city was successful in getting its, its grant application approved by the county for $750,000. That application was made in partnership and, and actually on behalf of the RJ Group for their project at Beatty Square. And their partner in that is the Boys and Girls Club. At the time, the council went ahead and approved, authorizing the mayor to sign that agreement, but we held off until RJ Group was ready. Part of them getting ready was to get their letter of intent from the Boys and Girls Club, which they have now secured, and some additional paperwork and financing and things like that. But they are now ready to proceed. What this agreement does is authorizes the city to obtain those grant funds from the county, and then through a process of billing, which we'll set up, we show that in the, in the exhibits. RJ Group can proceed, and then will bill us periodically for their expenses. So, we're ready to go.
All right. Counsel?
At the time when we had voted, they had not had an actual agreement in place with the Boys and Girls Club.
That's correct.
Has that agreement come into place? I know it's now more significant in writing here, but I just want to know if that has been solidified.
Yeah, they, they have a letter of intent. I'm not sure if they were doing a formal agreement, or if the letter of intent sufficed. That was between Boys and Girls Club and RJ Group.
Yep, and then once we get closer to certificate of occupancy, we'll have the...
Sorry.
Once we get certificate of occupancy, we'll have the legal description of the property, and then that will be put into the formal agreement. But the letter of intent outlines the entire terms that will be seen in the actual agreement.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Garrett.
And Councilman Cock?
Maybe, can I ask you a quick question? So, the current Boys and Girls Club clubhouse, I guess, is in my ward. Will they be moving from there to Beatty Square, or will be two of them? I don't...
It's a, it's a full new expansion.
Oh.
Hiring all new staff.
So, there'll be two of them, then?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Burns?
You know, reading through this, I am perfectly fine with this agreement. I think this is spectacular partnership. I appreciate what the RJ Group is doing here to work with the YMCA, or, sorry, I'm getting my acronyms mixed up, the Boys and Girls Club, in order to help our community. So, I am more than happy to move this forward. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'll second that. Okay. And any more discussion? I see Councilman Henderson, you had your light on?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Councilman Lavaca?
Ready to vote.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Burns, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, and this authorizes the mayor to execute the attached grant and development agreement between the City of Sejro Wully and the RJ Group to allow the distribution of economic development funds awarded by Skagit County for the infrastructure construction that supports the Beatty Square project. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Last item of the night is the contract supplement number one, David Evans and Associates. Thank you, Garrett, for being here to answer those questions, by the way. So, this is the RJ Group, oh, no, I'm sorry, David and Evans Associates, John Liner Railroad Undercrossing. So, Bill, we're back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we are about at a 40% design level with the Jones-John Liner Undercrossing Road. I'll just differentiate the two. And as they've approached this, we've, and the memo describes some of the different challenges we've discovered getting to that 30%. And this additional amendment for the, about $260,000 for the remaining design is part of those discoveries. And some of them are wetlands we discovered, some of them are drainage-related, and then also seismic-related on the BNSF bridge that was designed. With these challenges, I've been developing a various mosaic of funding for actually getting all this stuff fully funded. Still working on some of it, but I have most of it. That's also described a little bit in the financial impact on the memo as well. But I would ask council's permission to execute supplement one, so we can continue with these different design challenges. We have good solutions for them, and I'm thankful for DEA for bringing up to me earlier than sooner. But if there's any questions, I can answer questions about what some of these challenges were.
Okay. Are there any questions for Bill?
My only question is the unknown, right? So, yeah, these are, they're getting expensive. There'll probably be more to come. But do you have any forethought on what is unexpected?
Right. Well, barring something that we discover underground, I really don't expect many more to do. So, we've, for instance, we dug an 80-foot well next to the railroad tracks to monitor both the groundwater throughout a whole season now, or a whole series of seasons, and does actually look favorable. So, I don't, for instance, have to do any dewa, I highly suspect I will not have to de-water the project like we feared at one point in time. So, we've done, this represents quite a bit of investigative analysis, both on the wetland side. Part of the wetland thing we're trying to do is stay out of the wetland, so I don't put myself into a two-year permitting process, for instance. So, you know, we're managing those things, and I believe we've, you know, discovered, I don't anticipate, I, this is one of those things, squishy things, where I don't want to just say definitely no more unknowns. There could be some out there. This is a brand-new road rebuilding, undisturbed, undeveloped, right away. So, barring that, however, I'm pretty sure that there's not a lot of other issues. Just, I've been doing this for years, and these are the issues that have come up that are not abnormal. And I think we've defined them pretty solidly. I don't know any other way to say it, but I think we found most of the issues, certainly issues that the corridor study that Reickert and Eby performed were more detailed than that, because they missed a lot of these issues. But the scope of their work didn't necessarily have you, we've done several geotechnical borings and verified, I believe, the underground sources that would cause change, and we understand how to deal with those. So, at this point, I expect a pretty clean project from this point on, because we've done a lot of work to make sure we cover those unknowns. The biggest surprise unknown was the seismic issue under the bridge. And, you know, for instance, our engineers originally were figuring this might be a $1.2 million add, and they've actually come up with a solution that's only about a $400,000 add. So, very creative team. I'm glad I have them on board. They have worked for me before, so I'm pretty confident in what their recommendations are at this time.
Great. Well, thank you very much. And I'm glad we're getting close to the end of that.
I don't see any more lights on. Are we ready to vote? Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the contract supplement number one with David Evans and Associates for Jones-John Liner Railroad Undercrossing.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'll second that. All right. So, we have a motion by Councilwoman Burns, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, and it authorizes the mayor or designee to execute the first supplemental to the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Sejro Wully and David Evans and Associates, Inc., DEA, supplement not to exceed $259,955,000. Hope I read that right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, great. Motion carries. All right, thank you, everyone. It is exactly eight o'clock. We are out of here within two hours. Amazing, given that this was a lot of, a lot of work tonight. So, with that, if there is no objection, have a great night. We are adjourned.